All right, Peter, you're on.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Marion Township Board of Supervisors meeting for August the 29th, 2024. Uh, the time is now 7:01 PM. So first item, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. And uh, go through the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, as always, these meetings are recorded for audio and video. We ask that you please silence your cell phones. Uh, so as to not disturb the overall flow of the meeting. Um, for anybody interested, there are still masks and hand sanitizer at the front of the room. And uh, we'll move into the first order of business, which is the approval of minutes for the the most recent meetings. Um, unfortunately Irene is not able to be here with us tonight. Um, and I have not had a chance to look at the meeting minutes yet, so. Um, based on general lack of the ability to form a quorum on that. Uh, we will need to table the meeting minute approval until next month's meeting. Okay, uh, Irene also has the treasurer's report, but she is unfortunately homesick. Um, there were no, from looking through it, there were no abnormal bills. Um, it was all budgeted items and other related expenses. Uh, there should be a copy of the treasurer's report on the table there for anybody that want to see it. And uh, I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the bills for August 2024.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse. Roll call Peter.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I will open up the floor to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board? We ask that you come up to the podium and very clearly. Um, and as loudly as you can without yelling, state your name for the record along with your address. And uh, make sure that you've signed in on the sheet at the front of the room for again, record keeping purposes. Uh, Jesse, yes.
It's time.
Yeah, you need to come up to the podium because we have to make sure we get it on record. Thanks, Dan. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I could hear that it was you, Dan, but I I fear that I I might not be able to hear everything you're saying if you're not close to the microphone.
At this time, Stonecroft Village Group would like to abstain and tell you three articles concerning Stonecroft Village.
Okay, noted. Thank you. Okay, Jesse, do we have any other comments in the room?
Coming up.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Ryan Hostler from the Savannah William Penn Boulevard. So, um, just a couple of quick things. Uh, during this past month, I had reached out to the township and to ended up speaking with Rich, Richard Butch, broker. He came down to look at a hole that was out front. People were going all over the place to try to avoid it. Who knew, even though the truck was uh, down at the time, got the truck fixed and within about two weeks, he got it fixed. I wanted to say thank you. He's not here to say thank you directly, but to the board, appreciate the uh, quick response. That said, there is still a crack across the road down there. I think it has to deal with that height that goes under the road down there. Uh, and there's a, an area that is top layers. Removed, I don't know, thousands over the years or what, but there's still a significant lump there and traffic is still going in the opposite lane. Little bit of a traffic concern, traffic's going the opposite lane to try to avoid a bump. Uh, so I'd like to continue to hopefully work with him. He did say, hey, it'd be great if it could pave like a short paved. Build it something about a 20 or 50 foot area right through there. That might help. Um, so. Think I'd read somewhere you guys are looking for some more help or willing to get that and maybe that'll get addressed too every time it matters. Then lastly, I'd love to hear some updates or anything about Sharon or from the township, uh, Lebanon, line down to William Penn. I think I was driving on the moon the other day when I was going through there and just want to make sure you guys are aware that that's a major, major problem in Street Bar. So sure, very diverse to the town. But uh, if there's any updates, picking source without the bid and maybe it didn't. It did, and that'll be coming up later in the season. Is there any chance of having it fixed this year?
Yes.
Thank God. All right. That's all I have. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, so Jesse, if you can, before uh, that gentleman leaves tonight, make sure we have the the correct location for the crack and the bump in the road. That way we can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Is that right across from your address, Ryan?
It is. It's it's down in the very hollow there. It's just beyond 700.
Is that where that pit, the rainwater, water, the last fair? When I was back in the room, it was probably on, yeah.
That's a problem. That's another problem. It's raging. It's not somewhere. Somewhere that that's a problem. The walls are rolling in there. Freeze. It isn't because there's no, all that grass is stopped and melting. Flames or like everything weird, like it's just, it's just lots of, I don't know, probably. Fixing kind of drains on that side, but from what I understand, the road is not, I was trying to beat someone off from there, almost worth it. They were having. Their side of it, this isn't the grass there, but the drainage thing is. That's the third one. We'll get that.
Thanks.
Anyone on the, right now, move, break into. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments?
A few signatures, guys, coming up.
Are they all Stonecroft or is it other people too?
Probably a lot from Stonecroft. Ian, Fred, Ian. That's most of them.
Okay, so the real question is, does anybody come up to the podium right now?
No, we're good.
Okay. So in that case, uh, seeing no additional public comments, we will do the Stonecroft public comments in line with the rest of the agenda items that pertain to them. And we'll move into the main items on the agenda. Uh, the first is a general announcement. Uh, as we had mentioned in previous meetings, uh, please be sure that you're getting your septic systems pumped out. Uh, we do have a list of registered pumpers available in the township office upon request. And uh, you, if you do have a register or a non-registered pumper that you wish to use, the act of getting them registered is pretty simple. Uh, they, that company can just reach out to the township office and we'll take them through the process. Um, we are still also accepting letters of support for the proposed sewer grants that we're seeking. Again, to reiterate, you don't have to be in favor of the project. You just have to be in favor of us trying to get money so we could potentially actually afford the project. So, um. If there's any follow-up on that needed, uh, please call the township office. I believe we have some very nice template letters that we can supply if you don't want to write your own. Uh, but every, every letter really truly does help when it comes to applying for grants. Um, speaking of the sewer project, the first main item on the agenda is the Act 537 Plan. There are no new updates at this time. We had previously submitted a special study to the PA Department of Environmental Protection, which was approved on April 30th. Uh, there are a couple of stipulations around uh, making sure we have water quality management permits and other approvals, uh, but that's going to come further down the line. The next item on the agenda is uh, the proposal that we had received for the new building. Uh, we had a conceptual plan, um, that we all kind of agreed upon as a a solid starting pinpoint. Um, and we have submitted for Senator Casey's discretionary funding and COVID-19 ARPA grant. Um, we have not received a word back on that. Uh, initially, it does appear promising to getting a couple hundred thousand dollars at least. Uh, but we have no approved design plans as of yet. Um, we also met with Madison from State Representative Musser's office, uh, and she toured the building on June 25th with Irene. And Sabrina from Senator Fetterman's office was out on Tuesday, July 2nd. Um, this is all in efforts to help support the grant funding process on our part. Um, and uh. We're just kind of waiting to see if those grants come back and uh, give us opportunities to potentially uh. Put a new building in place. Um, we're going to skip number three. Um, without Irene here, we don't really have a a full panel, but uh, Jesse, I encourage you and Lisa too. Uh, encourage you to jot down. Things that you think would be uh, good ideas for the township of short-term and long-term growth. Likewise, if there's anybody in the audience that has any ideas about ways to. Further improve the township, uh, we were looking at this in three basic categories. Uh, the first is beautification. Um, taking the township and making it essentially prettier, putting up banners, lights, et cetera. Um, things like that. Plotted plants, places, trash cans, that sort of thing. Um, efficiency, so taking something that we already have in place and making it better. Uh, and then the last one being capability, um, things that we don't have that would be nice to have. So I've spitballed some ideas. I have a list going, but Jesse, get, get some ideas, get some thoughts, and then the next step on that is we kind of. Uh, collate. All of our ideas together and then see where it starts fitting in from a a cost and timing standpoint. Uh, obviously, the the building is going to be a capability. Sort of thing. Um, because we're going to be able to do so much more with it, but that's a pretty big thing. So that's. Probably going to be a little further out on the five-year, five to 10-year plan. Even with the uh. The, the, the prospect of grants, that's a, a pretty big project to do. So. Give that some thought, think it over. There's, at this point in the process, there's no bad ideas. So throw them out there and we'll, we'll see what's realistic and what, what can be done in a timely fashion or within our budget. Um. Next item on the agenda is the proposed long-term rental inspection ordinance and fee schedule. Uh, Colin. Um, had suggested previously that we try to mimic the short term as closely as possible for ease of enforcement. Um, he has, I believe, gotten that to the point where it is ready for adoption. Uh, there was a note that was sent out. Earlier that I forwarded over from Andy. Um. That the long-term rental ordinance has been reviewed by Craft Codes and it is ready to be authorized for advertisement. So Jesse, unless you have any follow-up questions on that, I know Irene had previously dug into this in great detail. Uh, I will make a motion to authorize the long-term rental ordinance to be advertised.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Peter, second. By Jesse. Roll call Peter.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is, yes.
The long-term, uh, Glenn was in today from Craft.
Yep.
Um, he said that he has been reviewing all back and forth with, um, Colin regarding this. He suggested in the past, he has set up a town hall meeting. To go over everything with the residents that would fall under this ordinance, so he can explain everything to them. And if they have any questions, ask him. So it was just a thought that he just wanted me to throw at you guys to think about.
Okay, I mean, I'm not inherently opposed to the idea. Um. I would almost. As you can see, the problem with this is we don't have a already existing register of. Rental properties in the township. This is a relatively new thing, so it's not like we can targeted. Um, communicate that to people. Um. Let me, let me think about that and see what. What the best vehicle for that is, because I don't know if we actually have that many rental properties. But the problem is we don't know which, what, what they are and how many. Hey, uh, it got really quiet in there. Jesse, can you say something? Let me know that the mic is still working.
Can you hear me?
I can. Okay, so it just got really quiet in there. Um. Okay. Next is the Western Berks Joint Zoning Ordinance, Section 403. Uh, this is the one about.
Yeah, hold on, somebody's trying to get in. Maybe some change can be made on.
Okay, so we have a guest.
It's on.
Yep, they're in.
Is Julia still with us? Did she hear us?
Yep, Julia is still here. Okay, uh, Western Berks Joint Zoning Hearing was held on the July 18th at the Heidelberg Township Building. Uh, we are still waiting on Womelstorf to vote because they did not have a full quorum at the, at the time of the meeting. Once Womelstorf approves, this will make this ordinance official finally. Um, we also have the next item on the agenda, which is about the SALDO and stormwater ordinance fees. Uh, Engineer Bingham submitted this for review. Attorney McFarland is currently reviewing. Um. Our SALDO desperately needs to be updated. Uh, and uh, we need to update the fee schedule and then adopt both of those uh, things and approve a resolution for the fees. So, uh. Mike, unless there's major changes on that one, that one's a next month item, hopefully. Okay, I see you nodding there. Thank you.
Yes, that's, that's my understanding is that it would be next month. I'd like to wait for, uh, Colin to.
Colin. Agreed. Okay, uh, next is the uh, Comprehensive Plan. Uh, we received an email from David Hunter, who is the Berks County Planning COM Director. Um, which attended the WBJZ hearing on the July 18th session. Uh, the county is recommending that we update our comprehensive plan to become joint with the other municipalities neighboring us. Grant money is available. And Attorney McFarland is currently reviewing the agreement. Next, uh, item number eight is the Stonecroft Pond for Fire Suppression. Uh, the fire chief was out to test the dry hydrant. Uh, filters were clogged at the time, et cetera. Um. I don't know that we have any further updates on this other than, uh, there are two reports where they. And I, I say they being Stonecroft hired an engineer, not HOA, but uh, the developer. Uh, hired an engineer to do uh, flow testing on hydrants. And they stated they were successful. So I think there's, there's a bit of a mismatch between what we've been able to observe versus what the developer is claiming. Um. And unfortunately, I don't know that we have any further developments or clarity on that other than. We're at a, a bit of a, a standstill on. They say one thing, we say the other. Um, the only more recent thing was the fire chief did confirm that, that even though Stonecroft is a little more densely populated. Being medium residential, uh, there are no fire hydrants in Marion Township, so everyone is reliant on the pumper trucks. And the, the model of firefighting in our area is, is built. Around that fact, that they, they know they need to bring a high, high amount of water with them to fight a fire. So, um, I'm sure there will be more on that. I don't know if the, the residents of Stonecroft have, have anything that they would like to add into that for the record. Or Jesse, if there's anything that you would like to add to that point. But that is still, uh, we're going to keep that on as an agenda item until we get a little bit more clarity and closure on that.
Yes, people might, I'm Jim Donadini. I'm going to spell out D O A, D I R. It's also on the sheets. It makes it easier, but I get a lot of people like giving fun orders to someone that name. My grandfather Frank would appreciate that I did that. Um. It starts with the pond goals and the fire chief. Sadly, they got explained. There are two standards that they could have been shooting for. They shot denial. One standard would be NFC 11 to 12. And that's the agricultural standard for fire suppression. It's not Jim Donadini's. And I don't think it's the right answer that we went that, but the township went that. I know I have to take exception. You, Jesse. For Peter, I think, to at least 90% of the. And I, I really wasn't fond of the, all those decisions were made, but. The planning board clearly made their first decision. Um. The development ordinance that was in place then said that a fire chief could make an exception to the ordinance. For fire hydrants, wet fire hydrants, that could be further than 500 feet in fire. They could not be further than 500 feet in fire. You could move it to a different location as long as that location is not for. From another fire. And that was the ordinance, but the planning commission, for whatever reason was, decided to go with the A and B. Okay, well. Not what I would suggest, but that's, that's what they did. Um, and we can complain about all, all we want, there's another dollar behind that figure too. If we're to correct that. There was construction for wet hydrants, all four on the plan initially, that they backed off of when you guys said, okay, go ahead and talk through. So none of the piping supports the hydrant, you can make. If we want to turn it around to what it should be, we have to repipe the whole thing. Because Aqua tells us that there was an overpressure. Um. The next, and that's another to change. Um. We had streetlights that were called for by the community. And the developer decided that, well, it says we'll provide lights. Okay, so Jesse, I'm going to provide lights for you. You're going to lease them from, from that end. I'm going to, I'm going to provide them for you and you'll do that for the day you die. You'll lease those lights. To change, that's cost us. We've paid well over $100,000 on lights that should have been bought. When we came in as a newborn. We saw that error and we bought the next set of lights. Um, so there are four, four streetlights that we provided. Uh, when I bought, they don't have to be leased. We'll always have to pay for the electricity out there. But leasing the heads was wrong. The lights are terrible. And I'm worried about all the, just it costs me well over $100,000. Today. And I'm going to be 75 on Saturday, but I plan to be in the weeks. So I'm going to be paying for them again. Um. The plans fall for two hydrants on the street. Landmark never made one and accepted any of those. They just took out the hydrant. For a number of weeks, we went without hydrants. Keep processing your attention. They said, well, look, land one 26. Yeah, well, they did. Eventually they put in two dry hydrants. Into the ponds that have never been certified when I was there and we asked it. I know I've asked you three times. If it's going to be a test, let me go. I know what I'm looking at. I'm not just this Frankie old man. No, I did it for, I did it for General Cation and the Pentagon for a living. So I know what I'm talking about. You need to get 250 gallon per minute rate from a, from a pump, from that water source. And you gotta do it for two hours. Steady stream. If it breaks down, we can scratch again. And that pond won't support that. They're inseparable from each other now. Because the pond was not creating people and it hasn't been maintaining. We, we could have maintained it, why not? If we drove in it, it's not always the water supposed to hold that. To change, well, it's coming out of my back. Um. It, it's humorous, but it's not humorous. And I know everybody's here. I understand that. I'm not making light of it. I readily admit to you that I'm a kid that grew up in Boston. And the fire hydrant in front of my house was up to that form. Wasn't. I, you know, so I know what I, what I feel. The second reason for my paranoia is for 42 years I was a pilot. You ask any pilot, what they fear most is fire. Can't put them out in the air. But on my ground, we can plan for them. And that's why the ordinance was developed the way it was in different sections. Okay, so. The pond is in the hydrants now are inseparable. The fact that they hadn't been certified. Always brings it, also brings into question about the climate. And supposedly each step along the way, you release pond. I think innocently enough on the word of an engineer. And I, I don't know if the engineer. Didn't know what he was thinking about, what he was talking about. But he, we gave you the most recent illustration of that and you'll see that probably. I'm not going to brag along with that. But. Um. You have to stress this to us. If we didn't have Fred in the development, Josh Smith before him and Jim. Hours before that, I mean, they were, they're one electrician, one electrical engineer and two civil engineer. And he had told me the problems was normal for the development. And he arrested with an engineer. I don't think it's anyone's with. The county, McCarthy is separate, but you're not working to.
Now McCarthy was, that, that terminated what, two years ago or more.
Yeah, all of this goes back and it, it, it's not meant to be offensive against anybody else in the world. I, I probably in the minority in the development now thinks that this is the best word we're gonna say. Without exception, right? And you're to take part of the exception. I know that. You're not supposed to answer to me. You're supposed to. Okay. So. There are solutions to this. One would be to free bonds now. And I know the bonds are driven to a specific item. If it says that there was supposed to be a lift, a window, and there was a bond on that window. And the window is there, it works and it functions. You gotta get back that window. I know. What I'm telling you is, it's time for you folks to say. We screwed. We accepted the word of an engineer. And we screwed up. Now, and don't, you know, or say, yes, separate from the rest of the people who would have to make that decision. Your solicitor would, would advise you that way. I do too. But I think that's what's hard for now, is that you freeze bonds and don't say, yes, no, I'm buying. You say, there won't be any bond money. Until we can resolve the errors that we made and that we made with this development. A, a second opportunity would be a tax holiday for the members of Stonecroft Village. It would be a, a, a ranch right here, but. That would be another opportunity that's not against anything to the laws. But you could, you can do that for one or two years and we can figure out what the bottom line feature of all that is and figure out what we have to do. Now again, up for podium, Indian, you put in that one.
Well, I, I would like to address the, the bond issue that is coming up on the agenda. Uh, we. My recommendation at this point is not to release any, any bond. However, that's because of the issues that are remaining, they have not satisfied. I cannot, if they satisfy the issues, cannot hold that bond legally. But they have not satisfied it to this point, so my recommendation is that I give on it.
So okay, so there was a bond on, on the driveway. And the, the, not, the engineer went up there and said, yeah. There's a, there's a driveway there, by Colin. Well, there was a change in the plans by going, they took Aqua. And took what was supposed to be a driveway out to our, um, Avonia Court. And they put them into our parking. The head of it. And Landmark never asked if they could do that or ever presented a plan that was an ultimate.
I, I understand and I, I get your frustration, but that bond money is specifically identified to certain aspects.
And that's the specific area that I'm talking about.
Yes, but, but if it's already been released, it's already been accepted. I don't have the legal authority to say, oh, we're going to take that back. So.
I think the solution to that, which would be to say, we gave it to you wrong. We want to give it back. Because it wasn't under standard. We thought it was, we relied on our engineer. And uh, it was not, so it was an, it was an error, not right.
Well, we'll, we'll take that under advisement.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for an answer to no. I understand that's, well, it is. That's all I had to say. Any questions to make? Good. I have a story for you and whatever it is.
Okay.
Over 252 cover replay. Stonecroft. The, uh, list that I submitted to the town. I have, we've identified as the problem. Uh, includes. The clubhouse, which the drawing still says it's supposed to be a 120-foot building. 7200 square feet. And the town approved. The 2800 square foot building. Is one example of. This is time to weigh the weapons against. And other things were the streetlights where. Landmark leased streetlights. And then took the dollar that were in the bond money for furnishing streetlights, carried it off. Uh, the parking lot is the most recent one we've discovered. Landmark had been asked to fix it for years. They refused. And now we're, and at some point in the past, somebody blessed it. Well, we took care of that. What's supposed to be five and a half inches of asphalt is about two and a half inch. So there's. This goes beyond agriculture, so I guess they call it fraud. So they claimed. To furnish things. They didn't, and for whatever reason. It was approved. Now, uh, I guess the other one area that's. Some issue. You've got street signs that are failing just because the, they're de-laminating. That was in the, uh, thing. And the pond. So the, I was told somewhere that land, uh, landmark has previously requested and received approval of pond. Dollars that have, that was released. Uh, there are so many loose ends with a pond that was supposed to have. A de-watering, sediment removal, and plain liner reviewing. That did not happen. Uh, we've heard tales of excuses for it not happening. But we've also observed that the pond water level falls. Whenever we get a heavy enough rain that even fill up close to the current. Design level, which is a foot and a half above the original. Within a couple of days. That eighteen inches of water drops in this pond. And one of our engineers did an evaluation, said we can expect to be having between point one and point three inches of water evaporation lost in the day. So this is nowhere near evaporation loss. So this is another example of. Mistakes were made. And it's our request that you clawback. These funds. I mean, a letter to Landmark saying they failed to do these things. They falsified the information. It was well enough hidden. Nobody picked up on it. But then your clawback is appropriate. And I just want to, just in closing, one other comment, somebody said, gee, we can't afford to land marker slightly. Stonecroft pays about sixty-four percent of, uh, Marriott House's taxes. So you're not gonna spend our money if you get up and.
So real quick, I want to address the, the last item first. I don't think anybody has ever said that we don't want to spend the money to go after Landmark. The, if anything, the comment has been, we need to be sure that it's. Got sound legal footing before we engage in, in any sort of litigation. I do wanna talk to Mike separately. About the, uh, the paving specification, if that, I saw the pictures of the cores. If that is actually incorrectly done. Um, that would be a situation where Mike and I would be able to talk to Colin. Because, uh, as you mentioned, that, that would be in some way, shape or form fraud. They outright lied to us about what they did, knowing that the required inspection would not require coring. And simply was a rolling load test. So I, I'm not a lawyer. I can't comment on that, but I, I think that's something that we need to, we need to review further.
Peter, when I was up there, what I saw was not what was in the documentation I reviewed.
Yeah, and all of the.
Very, very thin.
Yes, and all of the items that you had outlined between the pond, the streetlights. Any of the bond releases that would have happened for that unfortunately would, would predate everybody, myself included, that was on the board. Um, I know we've talked about the streetlights several times before. And it's that, that sticky legal terminology in there about furnishing. Um, which shifts it from being a municipal matter that we would be able to, to, to lean on them about to more of a civil matter between you as residents and the homeowners association against the developer for. Uh, sort of sticking the screws to you in, in that respect. The only thing I can, I can offer and, and make a solemn promise on is if there are things that we can do. We absolutely will. But to the point of the bond money, if, if they have, and we use the monuments for example. If they have bond money tied up for the monuments and they successfully are able to address. That and provide what the plan calls for. We are legally obligated to release that bond money. We cannot hold it. We will get sued if we do.
And to that point, we will lose that suit, which will then lose your taxpayer. And that's the after work comes down. We wanna make sure that what we're doing is not a waste of your taxpayer money going after something that we don't need.
Yeah, we are very much willing to, to take up the fight, but it needs to be a fight that is reasonable, that we're gonna win. Jesse, do you have anything you wanna add further on that?
Um, one thing I can say is, is I don't know if there was, when this project was going on and parking lots were being poured, when ponds were being built. Um, we, from now on with big projects, like we gotta make sure there's inspectors, let's.
And we, as the, have the capability and personnel, we can do that. And have full-time observation, instruction of any public improvements. And that is something that is paid by the developer. I, I can't speak to what was done with previous engineers because I. Their, uh, their standard procedure is, but we typically like to have somebody out there whenever we can. I just think that's a good idea, Peter, for.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. It's, that's a good going forward thing. It's. I doubt, um, doesn't help the residents of Stonecroft tremendously at this point. So we're gonna need to figure out what we can do. Anything and everything to help them out. But absolutely going forward. Good, good practice to have. I think there were a lot of things, whether it was potentially waivers or exceptions. Back in like two thousand and four, when this first kicked off, or things like the fire code that they had mentioned around the fire hydrants. Being a little more diligent and stringent, which I think collectively as a board, we are. A little more attentive to that. Than maybe previous administrations had been.
Yeah, if landmarks in there, we need to have, they need to be watched when they're doing work.
Well, it does, it doesn't matter if it's landmark or anybody else. I think.
And to be honest, with all of these issues, my preference would be to have landmark come in and press. That would be, I would love to see that.
Yeah, I would, I would love to have somebody from Landmark when we have the town hall about discussing kind of the. The, the, the situation and, and how, if there's anything we can do, we will do it. Going through that whole thing, having somebody from Landmark there. Who represent Landmark. Because in a lot of these instances, unfortunately, the township is probably gonna be the messenger that gets shot. We're not the one that has caused the, the harm or done, done the negligent things, but. We're, we're the face that everybody gets to talk to.
My name is Dan Klein, back to the fourteen, Rose Bush Court in Stonecroft Village. Mister Township Paint Show here. Have you been to Stonecroft Village?
Yes.
And what have you looked at and seen?
I went to go look at the pond and I drove through looking for monuments and it didn't, so it was supposed to be a place.
Did you look in the parking lot?
Have not looked at the parking lot because that's not something I've been asked to do at this point. However, see that you brought us some four examples.
I did.
Yep.
I, you, have you ever looked at lots of plans for Stonecroft Village?
Have.
Did you look at the parking lot, Gavin?
Yes.
Does that look like it?
Well, I do. I don't have the plans memorized by heart, but.
Would you want to see them? Be happy to show them.
Well, I have a copy of the plans.
So, so, so Dan, Dan, I'm sensing, I'm sensing some hostility here. Thank you for providing.
Yes, you are, Peter. Three months ago, you were to have a meeting. We've yet to have that meeting. So I am a little hostile.
We're trying to find a place that will hold everybody. And I believe the school is not allowing anybody to have the rights, correct? So we are still hoping to have that.
From the church down near the town, it's pretty big.
Yeah, so Dan, this is, this is not necessarily like a dodge or anything on anybody's part. There was, uh, that first time that we had something scheduled with the school. And after talking with you and some of the other residents of Stonecroft. Um, you guys had actually sort of encouraged us to wait a little bit until you had gotten your, I think it was the BCCD right to know. Correct, correct. So if you have that in hand, fantastic. We had been in, in touch with the school about. Possible dates pretty much every month since then. But there's, as of recently with school starting up, the, the window for. The ability to rent the school out has changed. So we gotta look at other venues.
Okay, is it possible, Peter, to move the fire trucks out and ask them on Marion Fire Company? Let's be a good name.
I mean, I, I think that's certainly a possibility. There's no, there's no AV in there, so we would. We would need to make sure that we're, we're talking loudly. But other than that, it's a, it's a suitably sized space.
Right. Are you, Peter, I get the sense that talking loudly won't be the problem.
I, I also think that's.
A microphone and a amplification.
I said, I can bring my guitar up and mic.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
With you, but I, I just wanna stress that, that, that the hostility.
I am still hostile. I've been attending these meetings. I've been in the development for eight years. Understood. For eight years, I hear the same thing over and over and over. And I'm a little tired.
Understood. I just now, I think it's a little misdirected, is that.
Okay. We returned five deeds over to property recently. One of those deeds was the parking lot of the clubhouse. That should have been inspected. That should have been inspected by you. Because it was a recent deed within your.
We, we don't have any authority or jurisdiction when they turn over deeds. All we can look at is when bond release happens. I had to SDE for myself being.
Those deeds did not. Those, those deeds were turned over this year.
I'm just saying, we have no authority over the deeds. It's not what project is done when it's inspected and when the. Bond release request. That's where I have the authority. I don't have the authority when it comes to writing and passing over the deeds. I don't even get notification that deeds are passed.
No, no notification. We didn't, you didn't, nobody did. They just do things whenever they want. I'm sorry, Peter, I'm interrupting.
It's okay.
You're a nice guy, Peter.
I, I, I tried, Dan.
I'm just, I'm extremely, extremely frustrated with what transpires and what takes place. And the crap that Landmark or Stone Group has pulled with us. Peter, I watch you rolls rice. Did you know that?
Uh, I did not. I haven't gotten the keys yet.
I'll turn over to you tomorrow along with the twenty-five-year lease on that vehicle that you'll have to make the monthly payments on.
Yeah, like I said, Dan, I, I really don't like the situation with the, uh, the streetlights. If, if there was something that we could do and, and come in on a, on a white horse and, and fix. Believe that, I, I would do it. But this, from talking with Colin.
Bond money. You're holding a lot of bond money.
Unfortunately, it's not for the streetlights though, Dan. It's, it's, the, the law on this is very, very, very prescriptive. Um, and this is where I really wish we had Colin here, because I've talked to Colin about this. I've talked to Andy about it. Irene, having the legal background, she's weighed in on this too. Because of the way that they did that and the way that they have it worded. We had to release the bond money at the time, which again predates me being a board member. But. That being said, it, 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 hold on. It, it shift. Well, it, it, that becomes a civil argument. Because for what the plan says, and again, I don't like it. I think it's, it's terrible, but. The plan says they have to furnish streetlights. So if they come to us and they say, hey, there's the streetlights. You see them? We furnished them. The, the sub, the, the underpinning bits of that contract. Become a contract between the developer and the HOA, not between the developer and the township. Like they're not actually violating or non-delivering on any terms within the agreement of the plan at that point with us.
But parking lot's not finished. Parking lot now have its wear code on it. You cannot fully wear a coat on that parking lot. Because if you do, it'll be an inch and a half higher than the sidewalk. So when you come out of the clubhouse, you're gonna trip and fall in the parking. So. The whole parking lot, I had an engineer in there. And basically, that whole parking lot has to be stripped. Completely dead and rebuilt. That's gonna cost. A large sum of money.
Yeah, that is certainly not a cheap prospect. I will agree with you that, on that a hundred percent.
According to the engineer, the samples that were taken to the asphalt, it was discovered that there were an inch and a half shy. Of the specified amount stated on the Go-Go Roll Slate Plan for the development. The specs were to be six inches of two-eighths stone. Four inches of binder stone and one and a half inches of wear and course. We're not even close. And the bond money was released for the parking. So many false by documents. Just simple as that.
Okay, so I, I would say that let's put a pin in this. Mike, let's you, me and Colin connect at some point this upcoming week. To take a look at what our options are around. Um, specifically the items that we are now aware of in terms of Stonecroft providing false information around construction improvements.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Dan. Uh, is there anything before we move to the next item that you'd like to, to add? About the, uh. I'll say the current concerns that Stonecroft has. And keep in mind, we are gonna have a, a little further discussion on item number nine. With the, uh, the concrete monuments.
I'd like to focus.
Hold on, we got more comments.
Okay.
Good. I'm standing out with thirty-seven Loganberry Court, Stonecroft Village. I don't have near the expertise that some of the other people that step forward do. What I'd like to do is review the process. I forgot to transpire there. I mean, at some point, the developer bought a piece of property and made township. He offered a plan that there's no. From that point, I'm assuming bond money was. Uh, required. As a insurance policy or guarantee that the project would be finished. As recorded in the plan. Plan isn't, hasn't been followed. Building permits were. Uh, issued. For the building of the homes and I presume the clubhouse and a lot of other things. Which. Is that cost go to the township as far as the inspections are concerned then? I mean, for that.
No, anything developer related is billed to the developer. Uh, building, uh, permits are. The prices of permits generally covers positive inspections. That's the idea in there so that the township residents aren't hurting the cost. Ultimately, developer pays for the inspections of that. They pay for any onsite, uh, engineering presence that we would have. They pay for any attorney's fees that are, uh, related to doing in the plan or dealing with this. But it's, it's something that the developer is responsible.
Indirectly, I would think you would agree that. The people that purchased the homes down there cooperate for those permits.
Absolutely.
So now the work goes on. We approached the township. We're not satisfied with the work. I was on the HOA board at the time. Roy's partner was on a township supervisor at the time. He arranged a sit-down with our HOA. Stonecroft, Stone Group. And the town, and Roy. And, uh, communications were, were made. Building permits. Were, had been discontinued for, for a, a small amount and then, and then reconvened. But we've been asking all along, when you inspect some. Could the HOA please be noted once we have convinced somebody? Present to see the inspector. Never have, next inspector, never have. Never have. Next inspector never have. The pond inspections on uh, catfish getting stuck in the filters and not being able to get water to the dry filters. We were never made aware of any of these things going on. Then we received, we're still following up on it, and then we received conveyance letter. The last five portions of common area two fourteen or two fifteen, two fifteen, I mean, this have been conveyed to the H O A. We sat down in a meeting. We called the recorder of deeds, Mr. Sheeler, Sheeler, I believe it is, friend. He said, I have nothing to do with the legality or the documentation of the transaction. I record the deed here. We accepted that. We, you know, we thought, how can we be given something that hasn't been finished yet? And, and, uh, we have no options at this. Then Colin's, at some point in that same timeframe, Colin with a letter that I presume was from the that the board was aware of, that any issue that we are not satisfied with. Stone Group has basically met their uh, criteria for completing the project in, in Stonecroft Village. And that any further uh, action from this point on is between the H O A to the developer. So at that point, we weren't involved in the inspections. We had nothing to do with, is this done right or is it not done right? We've been saying all along what issues we have with the checklist. Now it's our problem to fight for the to go to court for who knows what period of time to get what uh, judgment, if any. And then meantime, we're gonna have to correct these problems on our own as an H O A potentially at our cost. So that we're not looking at a parking lot that looks like it was not properly uh, developed. So that's my story. And I appreciate your thought.
We appreciate the comment and thank you for, thank you for voicing that. Again, it's, it's a difficult situation. The whole thing is, is not a, not a simple thing. There's no one thing that we can say or do that's gonna make it absolutely a hundred percent right. But what I can say is it's, it's a tangled mess of civil versus warranty-related claims and the other concerns that you had mentioned that had originally been within municipal, municipality's scope. Um, I'm not gonna put Julia on the spot since she's standing in for the usual attorneys. But I will have a follow-up conversation with Colin, uh, next week. Uh, he's a little under the weather tonight about if there are, uh, specific things that we might be able to go back, uh, and review based on some of the, the new, new things that are brought to light. I can't promise or guarantee anything. Just that we are going to, to look at that and explore options. If there are any options that we can act upon, we will.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar enough, uh, to speak to it tonight, just because I'm filling in last minute, but, um, I will take all this back to Colin and Andy as well and discuss it with them.
Thank you, Julia.
Peter, I would like to clarify the, the term inspection. Uh, the only inspections that inspections that happen are during building code. They have to be licensed inspectors. Uh, public improvements, those are not inspections. Those are construction observations. Generally, what happens there is the engineer goes out, observes construction, certifies that it was done in accordance with the plans, and then they make a recommendation for bond release. But we don't spec. So I just want to make that very clear for insurance purposes and legal purposes. We are not inspectors when it comes to public.
She's like a fixable man. We're not looking for a hard line.
Yeah, they come up to the podium so we can get, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate it. Um, it, it's hard to hear otherwise.
But it, it's not a close call when a driveway doesn't go to a street. It empties into that driveway that you're looking at. I mean, that's, I'm not looking for you to be able to tell if that fork's not. Although there is a sinkhole and, and that was made abundantly clear, and water is now emptying into that sinkhole, not. So I think, I think we're not looking for a scientific inspection. I used to have to do that and had, like, there's nothing that the W five wants to do more than going to a four-story gym and telling them that you missed.
Yeah, I, I wasn't trying to, to demean anybody or anything like that. I just wanted to make it very clear that for insurance purposes for us reliably, we, we don't spec those items. But we do go out and observe the construction, not for the township and the township records.
This particular inspection, like I say, why don't you get out and see it? You'll understand what I'm talking. And I know it's not your, it wasn't your job, it wasn't your job, but it wasn't close. It was clearly a miss. But the, the same thing is true with, with water pressure, and we have to take it, uh, an exception to get that, I appreciate this. It comes off the worst of this, this life thing. We have a fire, it's a gas, natural gas to need. We have a fire in that development. We're not a good volunteer, but I don't think they've ever handled it. And, I mean, it could hurt a lot of people. Uh, and the system is, it, it's for a thin dry hydrant, you turn with thirty thousand gallons of water, just sort of. For one height. And it's done by two fifty times one ten. That's thirty thousand gallons. Maybe, maybe twenty. And the reason I did it, I know, even one to write up their equipment, they had to have. Not my problem. The problem is, is that, that, now the pond wasn't done to see it. And that there is a pond there, and it does retain water. But two civil engineers in the development told you that, like, what we've done wasn't the solution. The, the plans that they had, they said that wasn't gonna work in the deep end.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, for what it's worth, Jim, Lake Wobegon, we didn't think, we didn't think the plan was gonna work either. We actually rejected it, but then B C C D approved it. So we, we got superseded on, uh, uh, authority on that by a, a, I'll say a higher institution when it comes to the approvals for that. Because, uh, even the engineer at the time was like, no, this, this is not a good idea. This won't work.
Yeah, come back after.
Brad Walter, um. Question, you said you did look at the pond. Were you able to verify the water level?
Um, I wasn't out there for that. I was out there to check for algae and fish to see what the condition of the ponds were generally.
Okay, um, that was the lady question. Would you actually look at the water levels?
Peter, they said they're done.
Okay, thank you. I could hear that somebody said something at the very end there, but I couldn't hear what it was. So thank you for confirming. Okay. The, the next item on the agenda is the Stonecroft, uh, Bond one zero zero nine three seven five. Uh, as it pertains to the seventy-four proposed concrete monuments. Um, Stonecroft had placed, excuse me, another request. To have that bond money released. Um, we will be denying that request, uh, as we need a resolution around the monuments before anything else happens. Um, Jesse, uh, for your understanding, uh, we have to deny this, uh, because if we do not, as a matter of operation of law, it would automatically be uh, essentially approved if we take no action. So, uh, I will make a motion.
Peter, before we.
Yes.
Sorry, before we do that, I, I do wanna see if there's anybody here from Stone or Landmark that would like to address that. Because they were supposed to be here to request that reduction of bond.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody in the audience from Stonecroft or Stone Group, Jimmy?
Landmark.
Landmark.
To declare the developer of Stone Group and.
I do give a name, that say your name and everything.
Uh, I think we were, uh.
Thank you.
Just be clear, uh, Stone Group is the developer and not Landmark Forms. So.
You have to talk a little bit louder, sorry.
A transmitter was sent to the township and the engineer regarding uh, full release of the, of the bond. If a full release cannot be accepted, there will be an ultimate request to reduce it to the amount held just for the monuments as well as the inspections and slaying side of the associated. Is that able to be considered?
Pursuant to section five oh nine J of Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, the township has the right to retain ten percent of the original financial security until all improvements are completed. And at this time, my recommendation is that they.
Yeah, and that, that percent would be, you know.
That ten percent would be the amount that is left on the bond plus the nineteen thousand change for the monuments. Uh, the amount that, the amount that is outstanding is that ten percent, believe the original bond was point nine million, something. Something along the lines, I don't have the numbers right in front of me. But that is what's being retained is the ten percent contingency that was added beginning of the bond plus the monument. Nineteen thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars.
It is our understanding that there is security health of things such as motorbikes, street signs, et cetera. No, uh, that was highlighted in the letter to the township, so. If that is not the case, we'll have to review that, but it's my understanding that is the case and that's still being called.
The only financial security in that bond is being held is the ten percent of the original financial security. Plus the monument.
It's gone very quiet there. Is there anything going on in the room? I can't tell.
We did something to pay for.
Okay, thank you.
So with the discussion around monuments, I do have one question for the board. Um, we have gone round and round with these monuments and asked for different solutions to this problem. We are happy to provide monuments. Um, we actually provided loopholes at, in the curve around the community of three hundred loopholes, which by any modern survey standard is sufficient to do the product right away divisions. Up the, up the discussion and to be identified. The monuments along the public right away, uh, William and Little Hard have been installed, which I believe. And so the only, the only ones remaining are ones that are not able to be set with a concrete lining due to utility conflicts. So we've had discussions about this. Um, it's our understanding that the, until it's a public record debt. However, uh, with thirty-six inch concrete monument that can't be installed without a, a building. In addition to that, it was discussed about possibly setting a hundred pin for that. However, that also is not considered viable option due to the obvious safety concerns of hammering a steel pin correctly without a, a. So at this point, we're, we're kind of looking for a little bit of feedback on that. We've offered other solutions as well. They offered installing a L R screw in the curb with a drill hole to better prevent the agents out there of the drill, which are an offset. For the permanent ones that are being made, but it was also discussed the private offset monument, which, um, we are personally not of the opinions of this division as that would cause for confusion twenty years and some good split with their probably liners in the, in the right way. Private offsets can be also confusing. However, if that is supposed to be township, that can be done, just that's landmark and not, like, Stone Group's wants to do that. So if there's any guidance or, or information that'd be, like, a more likely to provide to Stone Group so that we can get this probably finished, as maybe what says moving on for a number of years and all the work except this monument basically done. So aside from questions about the pavement, uh, which has not been brought to my attention, um, I can't, I can speak to that, but I am looking for some kind of discussion.
Yeah, and, and in my email to you, I did say that the, the pins could be placed there, and if you're uncomfortable with placing them over electric would have a, uh, hydro excavation or air excavation of that area, which is, uh, sure you're familiar with that process, uh, probably pretty expensive, but it, it does allow you to excavate safely to see what the depth, uh, utilities are, so that it's safer for those pins where they're supposed to.
So that would include serving the currently established lawn areas to.
Uh, you can easily create a, I think, uh, kind of four-by-four section for for that, so with a back truck and not have any real service anybody's shot.
So if that's the, the direction that we're seeing from the board, I would discuss that with anyone. And, and come back with a, a response. I find that to be a little bit concerning position because that's still be compacted to the same level that I was earlier at. It's like that. But that is the direction that we're going to put them.
You can ask the residents if they'd like that option. You know, if they're here, uh, if they prefer monuments in the private offset, I'm okay with either one. Be honest, these are the best people to ask right here.
Be honest. Uh, you need to come up and say. I had no idea.
We can work pretty simple. The girl holding the coffee. They are got monuments.
We've asked for a plan to do, and if you're saying the rolls are taught. My first intention about, about going to the first. You got like her good part.
I'm Tracy Trout, thirty-nine seat first lane. I am a member of the H O A. And I find ludicrous that this discussion is even going on with no contact between us and them ever. And now that we own all Stonecroft, because we have the deeds to everything, I can't imagine any resident would allow them to come back in and touch any property that we have. Because now are, right? Sorry, that's what makes sense to me. Uh, and mine, so I'm on you. Stick to you hold the wealth of that.
I, I think that there's, but your point, your point states, your point states.
Sorry, four, three hundred? Okay, I'm sorry.
But we do, to that point, we do have to provide them some direction that is satisfactory, whether that is to install the monuments or the pins. Otherwise, we have to release that line.
And I, I get that. And so what those monuments do is delineate each homeowner's state. Is that what we're talking about?
It's only along the roadway branch. They shouldn't have pins at all forms of people's bodies. It's just areas that are along the big branch.
So you're talking to you, but the plan is ours now. And so he should be talking to us. Because we ultimately have to make. That makes sense to anybody else in our group? Okay. But in our neck, you know.
Day of point fourteen, most Bush Court, I ask you, sir, who do you represent? You represent Stone Group, you're their attorney?
And I'm their attorney, it is my understanding.
They said, if you need to come up here so long, I'm sorry, that's. Everything's gotta be recorded and.
Stand up that side to hook down. And before we define.
Sorry, so if you can repeat the question and then repeat everything so that it they get recorded.
Who do you represent, sir?
I'm not an attorney, but I am here on behalf of.
Okay, and what is your company?
I am here on behalf of.
That's not what I asked you, sir. I asked you, what is the name of your company?
He's 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 going, I'm just gonna interrupt, don't he answer, he's gonna, he's going to say Stone Group because it is, if the property was started by Stone.
Now, people standing here representing Stone.
Funny as Pat Dennis.
You need to come up here, I'm sorry.
Pat Dennis, the director of Land and all.
Okay, if you can get closer here, it's, I'm sorry, this this stuff is really hard to check out.
And I get that.
Thank you so much.
Nate Nate works is representing Stone Group as I am here representing Stone.
Okay, and then it's say your name again, so we're good.
It's Pat Dennis.
That that is, thank you.
The director of Land and all. Nate nor I are on trial this evening for what's going on. So we've heard, we've heard the comments, I've heard the comments, we will take them back to ownership, we've got the direction that we need for. The monuments, which is what we came from. So I appreciate all the comments, I really do. Well, we've got some direction on that. The bottom line is, is that now we're sitting here and they're standing in a podium going back and forth to each other. The thing for rubber tools or order in some of your forum, we just need to kind of forward where we've heard the comments, we get it. And we would either if he needs more direction, they'll just be telling us, I think we just need to make this more productive. Than sitting here arguing with each other.
Okay, so that's my two cents. No, don't walk off, please. Do not walk off. So you're here for Monument Zone, but you told me you're the land director for Stone.
The director of Land and all.
Yes. Did you see the course I put on the table?
Didn't see that.
So so stop the business. Uh, it's all understated, it's typical HOA has uh attorney. With them, maybe not here, but. Taken by them and therefore would not necessarily direct them to speak to us. Sorry, but.
We did not have a higher attorney.
There's been a large set for office from an attorney from the. At this point in time, we would like to always speak to the intention for this.
Okay. Well, check it up at the special meeting. That they're invited to.
Uh, do we want to make a motion on this tonight, Peter?
I think at this point, we have to reject the current request based on. The lack of, uh, I'll say clarity or completion on the monuments. Um, Mike, give me the courtesy of following up with Landmark if they have it, or I should. amend that Stone Group, I apologize. Um, following up with Stone Group to make sure that the the directive on. Placement of those monuments, whether it be through excavation, hydro or air. Uh, or offsets that we are clear on the requirement for that.
Yes, I I will wait until Colin is back at work and I would like to meet with him before we officially make a recommendation to Stone.
Agreed, I think that's prudent.
He just bought.
I didn't get any of that. Somebody repeat?
Uh, Dan just said he would like to have notification when they're coming into the development.
Okay, the uh. Representatives from Stone Group, can we? Can we make make sure that something is sent to the HOA as a courtesy?
Okay, and and we were said, okay, and um. Yeah, he's actually shaking his head back there, you can't see him, but yeah, he's he's saying, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's saying we were saying, okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, on that, I think we've. Exhausted the discussion around that, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is number ten. Oh, wait, I we have to, we have to motion for that. Thank you, Lisa. Um, I will make a motion to reject the current. Bond request around monument placement until greater clarity. And uh, detail is defined with the uh. Developer.
And including that, the ten percent reduction as well.
To permit the ten percent reduction or or reject the ten percent reduction?
Ten percent reduction as well, it's two separate requests.
Okay. So let's, yeah, add add that in there, Lisa, to also include the rejection of the ten percent reduction request.
Okay. Okay, so you're making a motion.
I'll second.
Desi second it, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
See.
Hi.
Okay, so we will put the Stonecroft to rest for the night and move on to number ten. Sir, did he sign in? I tweeted his name. We have these. Yes, thank you. Yes, I have given your name, so we can just put it in on the notes right here. I thank you so much.
Finally, the I lose.
All right.
All right, take care, have a great night, thanks.
Thank you for coming out.
Right?
Okay, on to road maintenance. Uh, we are working on assembling the list. For the updated uh six year cycle on road. Um. We've had to adjust a little bit and we're gonna have to shift some things around based on what we had to do last year with the culverts. Uh, but I think we're we're starting to get ourselves, we're back onto the correct track with the remediation of Sheridan this year. Um, hopefully we get what we're expecting next year in uh liquid fuels and turnback allocation. Um, so that we are able to continue the trend of addressing some of the more egregious areas uh of roadway within the township. Um, likewise, um, Mike, I know we have a couple of projects that are. Um, specked out already and are ready for grant submissions, so when grant opportunities open up in the beginning of next year. Typically, that's a February or a March thing. Um, we'll put put a couple of projects in again and see if we're able to secure any grant funding. Um, Jesse, I I won't belabor that point too much, but do you have anything that you would like to add further on that?
No.
Okay, excellent. Moving on, uh, Wintersville Culvert, this is located at thirty eight twenty Wintersville Road. Uh, we held a special meeting on August fifteenth to receive bids and uh award out the work contracts. The bid was awarded for this work to Mr. Rehab. For a total of fifty nine thousand five hundred and twenty one dollars contingent upon review by Engineer Bingham and Attorney McFarland. Next is the Sheridan Road South drainage and paving improvements. Uh, also at the special meeting that was held on August fifteenth, we reviewed bids um for this and awarded. That contract to H and H and K Group for two hundred and sixty six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Uh, this is also contingent upon the review by Engineer Bingham and Attorney McFarland prior to it being awarded officially. Next is guide rails. Uh, this is around the portion for William Penn Boulevard and Hickory Road. We made a motion to accept the lowest bidder of the way uh of William Oars and Sons in the amount of twenty thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, we have to sign the agreement with William Oar and Sons and authorize S D E to issue a notice to proceed. Um, so Lisa, if that agreement is ready, I will sign that when I'm back uh back in town. And uh, I would make a motion to authorize S D E to issue a notice to proceed uh upon the signing of that agreement.
I don't know if you saw, but I just handed Lisa the agreement, uh, so she does have that.
Perfect. Um, if you leave it on your desk. Friday, I can stop in and and do that when I get back.
Right, do you need any questions? All right, yes, I'll put it on my desk.
Okay, very good.
All right, so then you made the motion.
To authorize S D E to issue a notice to proceed proceed. Once the agreement is signed.
Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, next is the extension of the stormwater pipe along Marion Drive to Main Street. Uh, bids were placed on Penn Bid on June twenty fourth. Uh, we had awarded this to M and A Excavating. But upon further review by the engineer and the attorney, we found out that M and A is only a Penn dot subcontractor. Uh, and are not qualified as a general contractor, which uh does not meet the required specifications within our proposal. Um, we had to summarily reject the bid and rebid this out. Uh, for the special meeting that was held on August fifteenth. Uh, we received new bids and awarded this to the lowest bidder, which was Alguayer Enterprises LLC. In the amount of seventy seven thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars, like also contingent upon the review by the engineer and the attorney. Um. So I we don't. Have to go into that too much because without Colin here, I think it's gonna be. An incomplete conversation, uh, but Mike, if there's any updates that you can provide in between meetings to the Board of Supervisors on those road projects. And that the contingency reviews, that would be much appreciated.
Absolutely, and we did send out those notices of intent, so we're just waiting on them to come back for us to review.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the Ballinger Road overflow matter or fill overflow matter. Uh, we will need to remove some fill at three forty one Hickory Road. Uh, that was placed along a steep embankment of a roadway, but ultimately rolled out of the right of way into private property. Uh, we held a special meeting um for all of those things that were bidding related. And we did receive bids for this. Um. The one bid that we received was the Construction Master Services to do this, which they quoted a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars and twenty five cents. Um, this bid was rejected as uh we have to rework the specifications on the request for proposal. Uh, because it was bid, I think, way higher than it should be. Uh, rebidding will take place in December. Uh, so that we are able to coincide when the work is going to be done. With the the permit window, so that gives the contractor greater flexibility and and should reduce the price substantially. Um, beyond that, we're gonna skip number sixteen due to uh the possibility of litigation that still exists. Uh, and I I won't tread on that without Colin present. The next item on the agenda, number eighteen, is property maintenance issues at six sixty Canal Road. Uh, this is that shack that's owned by AT and T. The residents of six sixty three and six sixty four Canal Road have agreed to demolish the shed at no cost to the township. Um, we've also agreed to waive the permit amount of three hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, that was approved by Kraft based on the fact that the residents are willing to do all the demolition and cleanup at no cost to the township. Uh, as of right now, uh, demolition has not started to my knowledge. Um.
Uh, do you want this on the agenda every month until it's done or can we remove this?
Um. I would say just keep it on there until it's done. Um, Lisa, I'll talk to you in Seoul tomorrow about. Um, I want to maybe structure the agenda slightly differently so that we have like groups of things. But we we don't have to do that on on this meeting. Um. Next is the dumpster exemptions. We received four dumpster exemption requests. Um, from looking through them prior to the meeting. Um. It looks like all four of them are legitimate uh exception requests. All are. Businesses or farms. And let's go through one by one. Let's, the first one is Dwayne uh Brewbaker. And I'm trying to find Dwayne's paper in the packet here, give me just a second. Okay, Dwayne Brewbaker has. D L B Exteriors LLC is the company. So I'll make a motion to approve the dumpster exemption request for Dwayne Brewbaker, seven Adress Road.
And I'll second that.
Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, the next one. Is Troy and Lynette Gelsinger at one eighty one Forge Road. Uh, they have provided a um account summary slip of billing for. The uh business that they run from that property. I'm trying to see if the. The company name, uh Forge Hollow Farm, I believe is on there. Check something real quick. Yeah, I.
I don't.
I I don't see, I'm I'm checking to see if there's a business registration there and I don't see. Anything with that. Let's let's table that one. For this meeting. Until we can, we can determine what. What they fall into on that. Whether it's a farm based exception or a business based exception, because I don't see any business.
Yeah, yeah, it says you're starting, you can buy or more farm dwellings.
Yeah, it's not an apartment, I know that.
And I can't, I can't, I.
I just, I tried looking up the address and some of the the contact information to see if there was a business associated with it, but I. I got nothing.
Well, Peter, we got to look it up online.
Yeah, so, uh, and I don't think it's a farm either, looking at it. But let's let's table that one for now. So the next one is for David and Katie Satizen. Uh, this is for uh a farm request. It's a dumpster, it's a four yard um dumpster that would service the following properties, thirty nine eighty two Smallth Road, thirty nine seventy six Smallth Road, and thirty nine ninety three Smallth Road. Um, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Hey, Peter.
Yes.
One eighty one is sixty three acre farm.
Ah, okay. Thank you for confirming that. So uh, going back to number two, I'll make a motion to approve the request for one eighty one Forge Road uh as a a farm dumpster exception.
Yeah, but I'll second that.
Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, then number four, uh, number four is for Jacob Weiss, uh, who owns the the poultry operation there, that's six sixty Marion Drive. Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We, Peter, your motion, Jesse second. For uh David and Katie Saturn. Number five, okay, all right, so the motion was made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, sorry, and we'll go to number four.
Yep, uh, I made a motion to approve the Jacob Weiss dumpster exemption.
Okay.
No, I'm starting.
Okay, so the motion was made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay. Next is uh number twenty, the Blue Spruce forty four oh five Conrad Weiser Parkway. The property owner is adding an addition to an existing building. The planning commission has reviewed this. And states that more work needs to be done with the stormwater management plan. Uh, Engineer Bingham has recommended that we entertain three waiver requests.
I believe that the commission actually recommended conditional approval.
They did.
They did.
At.
At the last planning.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was July. And then.
I just wanted to clarify, uh, so.
Wasn't here in July, so we named people like they. One of those survivors.
Yeah, so the plans themselves are relatively clean. It's a, it's a matter of administrative items, getting signatures, uh, finalizing the cost opinion, getting the. Bond settled. Reporting plans, things of that nature. So as far as I am concerned, plans are relatively. Clean and Brent, you're here, would you agree with that statement?
Uh, yeah, you know, we would agree to, to all of our main.
Or is it, sorry, yeah.
That's pretty shape for the party, you're uh. Yeah, we were here in July. Uh, there were some stormwater issues to clean up, so we did that, we came back. Uh, and then we got a, another review from, from SDE. It is August thirteenth and that, that letter, uh. I have that in front of me and it's, it's all, you know, it's all very minor things and it finished straight about which we, we agree and why that's.
So, so Peter, there's three items on the agenda for waiver requests. So we need to go through each of those and if you are comfortable with it, uh, if he's looking for a conditional approval. Uh, the conditional approval would allow for him to satisfy those administrative items without having to come back before. But that's entirely up to whether you want to do additional proof.
Okay, so as long as it meets the scrutiny of the planning commission, I don't have any personal. Uh, qualms about providing conditional approval. Uh, let's go one, one by one on the three waiver requests. Uh, first one is waiver four point, for four point two zero on the salvo to allow the plans that are submitted to be a combined preliminary and final. Plan. Uh, I'll motion to approve that waiver request.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, next is waiver for three oh seven. Uh, this is the stormwater ordinance to not require a groundwater recharge. Due to the high loading ratios, minimum separation distance and karst topography. Allowing the utilization of a managed release concept to satisfy water quality requirements. Um, based on your review of the, the submitted items, Mike, do you agree with that substitution there for waiver on three oh seven?
I, I do, and, and D P uh regularly uses the managed release concept. In lieu of uh infiltration when it's not advantageous to do so, so my recommendation would be to uh bring that.
Okay, I'll motion to approve that waiver request for three oh seven of the stormwater ordinance.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Okay, and the last waiver is for four point three one on the salvo, uh, salvo. To allow for plans to be prepared at a scale of one inch to, for, for forty feet. I'll motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi. And then the, the final thing would be the recommendation for conditional approval. Conditioned upon satisfying the engineer's review letter, any outstanding, any comments that the township solicitor may have.
So Lisa, if you got all that, I'd like to make that motion for conditional approval.
I'll send you, I'll send you.
Yeah, uh, Michael's uh filling in on all that, yeah.
Yeah, per, per the, the stipulations that Mike outlined around the review and approval of. Planning Commission and everything else, uh, and he'll send you the exact specifics. Uh, I would like to make a motion to authorize conditional approval.
And I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is number twenty one. This is eighty five Main Street for Twilight Acres. The preliminary final plan has been submitted. Uh, they're proposing to add on to the existing building, which was the old social hall for a bakery with storage and shipping areas along with the cafe. Uh, planning commission reviewed and has not made any recommendations at this time. So we should hopefully have that for next month's meeting. If not, we'll keep it on the agenda until we have, uh. Excuse me, some recommendations from the planning commission around that. Uh, next is the uh request for forty three fifteen Conrad Weiser Parkway. Uh, to be designated as an ag security area. This is owned by Justin and Bethany Hurst. Uh, we need to adopt the resolution entering the Hurst property in ag security. Uh. Attorney McFarland has prepared the resolu- uh, necessary resolution. Which is twenty twenty four dash thirteen. And we have approved this. At the June Board of Supervisors meeting. So, um, unless there is something additional, Lisa, find out from Colin. I believe we can remove that one. From the agenda as it is completed.
Okay, I was going to ask you that.
Okay, next, number twenty three is Jeremy Troutman's poultry operation letter of credit release. This is for nine ninety one Stoutsburg Road. We have received a request for an escrow, escrow release. Uh, some work still needs to be done to finish the project. SDE has recommended a partial release in the amount of eighty four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and ninety one cents. Until deficiencies have been addressed. This leaves a remaining balance of ten thousand dollars. Uh, Cobank has a different amount due to an auto increase and we're waiting on a reply from Cobank, uh, who will, who will be speaking with the owner on the account. To correct so the money can be released successfully.
Um, yeah. Yeah, we can, yeah, everything will.
Yeah, it was relatively.
Yeah. Uh, I, I will try to follow up on that, yeah, because they. She will not release anything because I even asked after the last meeting. We approved it to be, the letter said that. Leave only the ten thousand in there. And she said, no, came back, no, and she wanted to follow up with the. Or the customer of the account, so. Uh, I'll see if I can follow up with her tomorrow.
Okay. Um, based on that, we've already authorized the. Release that was uh motioned at last month's meeting, correct?
Correct.
We just have to wait for the corrected amount.
Yes, yeah, we're supposed to uh also leave the ten thousand in the account, whatever amount they have. But um, I guess that's not good enough, but.
Okay, so what we'll do once we have the corrected amount is that the, whatever the next full board of supervisors meeting, we will enter that into record. Uh, so that we have it recorded what the actual released amount was in association with the Jeremy Troutman poultry operation.
Yeah, I, I kind of copy um Mike on it, so he knows what's on and we. Yeah, he knows I'm on it, I can try and follow up on it, so. I'll look into it again tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, next item is the property damage from snowplows, uh, the complaint form and protocol. Uh, we're working on that. Uh, Attorney McFarland did review it and suggested that maybe we want to reconsider this. Um, I have some thoughts and ideas that I will circulate a little bit. Um. Rather than it being a complaint form, maybe making something that's a little more general purpose about a road damage form. That could, we could use uh other times of the year in addition to snow plowing and maybe we'll address some of the liability concerns that Colin had. So. Uh, more to come on that. There will be some offline discussion between uh. Legal counsel and some of the supervisors around that. Um, with any luck, we might have something that we can discuss further uh next month at the meeting. Uh, number twenty five on the agenda is one thirty six Main Street. Uh, resident Diane Fisher would like, uh. The alley between one thirty six Maine and one thirty four Main Street closed. Uh, so that she can have a function at her residence on October twentieth. Uh, we would need to make a motion to authorize the alley to be closed on that date. Um. Trying to visualize where that alley is. I don't think there's really much of a concern for through traffic on that.
Peter, would you like the drawing?
Um, I'm looking up it on, on Google Maps as we speak.
There is another outlet there. Two other lanes for access there.
Okay.
Main Street.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that because there's. Alternate ingress and egress points, so. Um. What are your thoughts on that, Jesse? I'm, I'm saying, I'm, I'm leaning towards approving it.
I, I don't have a problem with it because there's, there's two other lanes that can be used that day, so I mean. If, if she needs it for a day, I, I, I would don't see an issue.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make them.
If there would be like only one lane there, would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. If, if it was like, hey, we want to close down Main Street because we're having a, a house party, that would be like, no. Um, but it, it's a little side alley and like, no, no one's probably going to use it that day. Anyway, it's just, it's the formality of making sure it's officially closed. That way they don't. Have any problems there, so. I'll make a motion to approve the request for, from Diane Fisher. To uh close the alley next to one thirty six and one thirty four Main Street. Uh, on October twentieth.
And I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse. Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the equipment and equipment repair. Uh, the little truck was taken in on August fifth to get the rust in the floor uh of the cab area fixed at John Wunsel's Body Shop. Um, that shop received the wrong part to fix the truck. Uh, the correct part was received. Uh, but due to that reason, there's been a delay on getting the truck back. Um. Do we have any ETA or idea from John Wunsel Body Shop of when we will get the truck back?
Uh, I haven't heard anything. I think they were conversing with Butch. And Butch is not here tonight, so I can't ask him. And you don't know, you want me or Jesse to reach out to them?
There has been a lot. Um, I just wanted to say, Peter, that. Butch has been conversant but not telling anybody else um about things. Um, so we've got to have that conversation again. Um. So.
Okay. Um, well, let's put it this way, if you don't hear from Butch. Tomorrow on this, um, let's, whether it's uh Lisa, you or Sol. Let's. Call the body shop and ask for kind of a, an ETA on when they're going to get the truck back to us.
Okay, you can do that.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, next, the John Deere boom mower. Uh, this needs some safety lights, lettering and signage. We are still waiting on the title work and the license plate. Um. Jesse, did you ever hear from Butch about the, the, the whole reverse gear thing? Like, what's going on with that?
Um, so basically I had Butch drop that off at Agri Tier and I'm going to have them work, work up a quote. Um, to do all the work that it's needed. Um, they're supposed to write a quote up. Um, Butch had brought to my attention that the hydraulic cylinder leaks profusely. He said it loses reverse when it gets hot. It needed a light, strobe light put on the top. Um. And I know the hydraulics, front tires rub the hydraulic lines on the front of the tractor. Um, so I told Agri Tier, I said. Look at it, tell me how much it's going to cost. And we'll look at a plan of action. Um, and go from there. When Butch dropped the tractor off, he didn't, um. Tell me any of that and he didn't leave a phone number or a email to get in touch with the office or any of us. So I did follow up because I knew he was going to be dropping it off that day and gave them our emails and phone numbers, so it can be handled.
Okay. Okay, uh, next is. Uh, we received a submission for equipment purchase around a blower. Like a leaf blower essentially to go on the John Deere tractor to blow the grass clippings away while mowing. Uh, the current brush that we have been using is falling apart. Um, we did receive some quotes from uh three places, excuse me, four places. Uh, first one. Uh, actually, no, it's only two places, but it's various pieces of equipment, so I think, um. We're below the uh. The threshold on some of these, but I think we're, we're going to need to have uh three separate. Quotes. We've got Zimmerman Farm and Agri Tier. We're going to need to have a third one to be compliant. But anyway, um, the first item that we had gotten from Zimmerman Farm was a Weaver Line Air Raid Blower for three thousand two hundred dollars. Next one was a twenty twenty four Buffalo Turbine Cyclone, which is a seven thousand one hundred and twenty five dollar unit. Uh, Agri Tier. Uh, provided a quote for a PB three fifty PTO driven blower for six thousand five hundred. And then Zimmerman Farms also supplied a quote for a PB three fifty blower. Uh, same model as the Agri Tier one for six thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars. Um, I think we should look into this further, uh, not making any decisions tonight. Uh, but whether it's a brush or a blower, we do need something that will remove the debris from the roadway as we are mowing.
I agree, Peter, and the brush. I went back and looked at it. It doesn't look too bad. I mean. Probably doesn't need to be replaced, but we probably finished out this year with it.
Okay, I mean, the other thing that we could consider is we should look at some quotes for just getting another brush.
Or that, yeah, um. According to Butch, it's too small. Um.
Well, I mean, we can, we can certainly look at. Prices for appropriate sized brush.
Right. I, I, I don't know, but I also didn't see any of these. Items that are in front of me, these, no, one, two, three, four, I, I didn't, I don't know what pieces of equipment these. These are. Um, so I, I wouldn't be able to make a decision on some.
Okay, so in the packet, tonight's packet, I'm scrolling down to get the page number, give me a second. I scrolled around. There are, there are pictures. It's starting on page sixty three.
I can't see that.
Yeah, it's on the general.
Yeah, sixty three through sixty six. Is the, the blowers. But again, I think we should look, we, if we're going to entertain the, the idea of getting a blower, we would need a third written quote. And we should also, before we consider spending on that kind of piece of equipment, we should look at what uh the cost of getting a replacement brush would be.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'll make sure, oh, Jesse gets copied for that.
Thank you. Uh, next, Conrad Weiser Youth Baseball is requesting permission to use the baseball field during the fall softball and baseball season. Practices and games are held from Au- uh, August to October. With times of use uh ranging from five thirty PM to eight PM. Uh, a certificate of assurance has been received. Uh, they will also, as usual, provide a porta potty. We would need a motion to authorize them to use the field at no cost. Uh, I will make that motion.
And I'll second it, and in light of that, we need to get that ball field drag, drag drunk, so we could get maybe possibly ask Carl one of these nights. Uh, at ball field.
Yep, let's uh, let's finish the motion and if we need to discuss that further, let's, let's, but I, I agree with you. Let's get Carl out there to, to do some. TLC on the ball field before the, the little league shows up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, next on the agenda, item number thirty is the ISOL payroll. Um, we received uh information on timekeeping and hiring processes that that firm offers. Uh, we'll have to take that under review and advisement to see if that's uh a suitable switch from uh. Uh, I forget what the name of the company is that bought Jet Pay.
I saw.
Is it ISOL?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the same company. They're just, they're pitching more, more services to us.
It, it's funny because it's ISOL and the computer paper is SOB IT, so.
IT.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my, which confused you.
Okay, so either way, I, I started to look at it and. That makes more sense now because it looked like a lot of what we already had, so I, I assumed it was a competing company. Um. But uh, yeah, no action needed on that at this point. Uh, next is the Burks County Association of Township Officials. Uh, this convention. Uh, for that is going to be held in October on the seventeenth at the Ole Fair Center at five PM. There is no fee, uh, but we would need to make a motion to authorize uh. Who we would want to be able to attend. Um. Believe in previous years, we have authorized uh any supervisor secretary. Um, or. Uh, road crew, and I think the auditors as well, so. Um. Pretty much anybody who is a, an appointed or elected official can, can attend, so. Um, I'll, I'll keep the tradition and I'll make a motion to authorize uh the, any, any interested supervisors. Supervisors, road crew, secretaries, auditors. Um, or EMC personnel to attend the Berks County Con- uh Convention. Thursday, October seventeenth at the Ole Fair Center.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse. Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay. The next item is number thirty-two. This is to advertise for uh road crew positions on Indeed. We made a motion at May's meeting and have received one application. Um, I have not gotten a chance to review that yet. Uh, Jesse, I don't know if you got a chance to look over the the application?
It's actually three. I reviewed three.
Three applications. Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, um, there's two that are possible candidates um that have very well-written resume. Well, not. They're well-written. Um, one was on a notebook paper. Um. So that's all we have.
Okay, um, Lisa, can you make sure, I'm I'm sure I probably do, I just haven't seen it, um, copies of the resumes? Or applications, I should say, in uh digital format?
Picture it is.
Okay, yeah, uh, either way, just take that as a follow-up for tomorrow. If you haven't sent it to me an email yet, please do and I'll I'll look them over for a first chance I can.
Like, what have you done both?
They're in a PDF file you sent. You you sent three attachments in one email.
Okay.
I believe.
Okay.
It was like last, so you might need to refresh it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next is we're working on populating a list of duties for the road crew. Um, this is going to be a a twofold sort of thing. We are gonna not only have a job description, a formalized job description for road crew members, we will have a list of. Uh, daily, weekly, monthly duties and responsibilities. Uh, clearly outlined and uh my suggestion is to put that in as part of the employee handbook. And we would have a section specifically related to uh. Various roles, so we'd have some details around secretary. We'd have some details around treasurer. We'd have some details around road crew. Uh, as part of that, that employee handbook, which. It's real sole purpose is to outline the the expectations and responsibilities of being an employee at the township.
Peter, did you see, um, I saw a couple of postings from other townships or just example, um, purposes in email?
I have not gotten a chance to see it yet, but I will take a look at it.
Yeah, there was, there was a couple of examples of uh what other municipalities are asking of their.
Their work group.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, I did see there was. I don't think it was that. There was something that you had sent four separate emails.
There was.
Was that it?
Yeah, well, those four separate ones were some vehicle um inspection form, so.
That's what it was.
Equipment, so if you get into a vehicle, I I'd like people to start walking around and checking them. That way nothing gets in this standard. Due to lack of.
Agreed. I'll uh, I'll take a look at those and we'll add them into our our binder of stuff then.
There should be, you're gonna wanna look at the last one and the three first ones.
Okay, yeah. I'll I'll look at all of them. I just didn't get a chance to do that yet.
Some of them were um, the the examples I pulled for from one of the forms was European and they spelled tire in European way.
How exotic.
Yes, T Y R.
Okay. Moving on to the next item uh is number thirty-four, the Assistant Secretary. Uh, we interviewed several candidates, um, and we've opted to hire uh Solens Kennedy, uh, Sol. Uh. Has started uh training with Lisa. Uh, we would just need a motion to formally approve the hiring at the pay rate of eighteen dollars during her probationary period of ninety days. Uh, she would be working twenty-five hours a week plus uh attendance at meetings. Uh, I will make a motion to ratify the hiring of Solens Kennedy as the Assistant Secretary.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, uh, the next item is. The uh zoning hearing board. Uh, it's with regret that uh Dave Stobby has resigned. Uh, the board needs to fill that opening as soon as possible so that we have a a full zoning hearing board. Uh, supervisors and other elected officials are not able to serve on that board while serving in an elected capacity. Um, so if there's anybody that is in the audience or knows of somebody who has a a good. Uh, procedural mindset and uh would be a good fit for the zoning hearing board. Please have them reach out to the township office with their their name in for consideration so that the board can uh review. And uh hopefully find somebody to appoint to that position. Next is uh the review of current employee pay rates, so. The current pay rate for the secretary is twenty-two fifty, the assistant secretary is eighteen dollars, roadmaster is twenty-one fifty. Road crew is twenty fifty. Um. I'm thinking what we may have to do around the road crew stuff in order to uh. Bring in people interested and willing to do that work, we may have to raise that rate. Um, I'd wanna do a little bit of market research on that and Jesse, that's, I think. Uh, getting into territory that you might be a little more familiar with, working for Penske. Um, if you can find any.
The one, yeah, um, there, the one. The couple of the job postings have salary expectation on them too.
Hmm.
Um, and I'm gonna start digging into them and also sending them to you and and Irene to also review. Um, just to give us an idea what everybody else is paying in the area. Um, and uh, once we figure out exactly what we wanna incorporate into that job, adjust according.
Okay. Um, kind of as a segue on that. Um. When Sue retired, we at the time had elevated the two secretaries that were assistant secretary to the role of secretary and. Uh. Unfortunately, it looks like maybe a a wire got crossed or something got missed and their their pay did not get adjusted, so. In the case of Lisa, uh, Lisa should have been adjusted to twenty-two fifty at that time. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize uh the retroactive pay or back pay for that duration. After the ninety-day period elapsed to current.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is the Emergency Management Coordinator's Report. I was gonna say, I didn't see anything submitted, so unless John is in the audience, uh, we're gonna, we're just gonna skip that. Um. So the only comments that I really have, the first thing is the review of the police report. Uh, last month was a busy month and Larry had warned me about that. Uh, they had fifty-eight citations issued and thirty-seven traffic stops. Other than that, it was a pretty standard month. Uh, but very, very, very busy on the the ticketing. Um, and from what I understand, he said it was a lot of speed trapping on four twenty-two. Um, other item for attention is beginning with this November's election, the polling site will no longer be at the Marion Township Building. And will be over at the Marion Township Fire Department Engine House. Uh, the address for that is four one two seven Conrad Weiser Parkway. Uh, and just to to reiterate that, it is not at the Marion Township Building again. Um, this change was made by the county of Berks, so when you go to vote, go over to the the engine house that's off of four twenty-two. Do not go to the township building.
We get a, we put a sign out on or something that day.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we should put a sign out like a couple of days in advance, but a hundred percent there should be a sign on the door that says like the polling place has moved.
But I will put it closer.
So they see it right away.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Irene's not here, so. Uh, Jesse, do you have any comments?
Um, I don't, um, I see the Twilight Acres donation of a signed monument. That was something that Lee Dyson covered. Um, I don't know who it was gonna be donated to. I don't know if it was gonna be donated to Marion Township or to. The MTC A, um, so that conversation, um, since I was not directly involved with that. Lee Dyson was, I can't really speak to him, if that makes sense.
Over moving.
He he should really be here to. Say his piece and not this. Sci-fi army because I can, I I can't make decisions based on. On that, it needs to be brought before the panel. Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, uh. Julia, thank you for being on tonight to cover for Colin and or Andy. Uh, do you have any comments?
Of course, you're welcome. Uh, nothing for me. I'll take everything back to Colin and Andy and you should hear from them shortly.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Uh, Mike, do you have anything for the engineer side of things?
Uh, the only thing I, is the gentleman in the back, I believe, had a question about sharing the road. He happened to be out with the building when, yeah, we talked about that.
So Brian last night.
You want to comment on that, correct? Uh, I did see that you guys approved apparently a plan from H K group for sharing road.
Yes.
But it was a bid, but yes, approved, uh, technically whatever, yeah, um, is that scheduled then? That can schedule for the year, also. It is scheduled this year, but they have to provide all of the bonds and other documents stating we've issued the notice of potential award. They have to supply that information. I will review it. Colin will review it. And once we get that uh squared away, we will then have. For uh make a recommendation for issuing a notice to proceed. I just know that there's a cutoff for us. Um, I'm very aware, so yeah, that's why we started taking it a little later, it gets old, but all of a sudden, there there will be class. There is, but it's gonna push back later, then later, we secure, so. I think it'd be great, great. So, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Another resident came in and asked if there is a way to Band-Aid it, so. The road.
Not really.
Because it's, they bid it based off of the conditions in current, but we're messing with it and.
They said, there's certainly more, I don't know.
That that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lisa?
Um, just about announcing for civic ready that it on the website, that is for notifications. I just wanna make sure uh we get that out there still and let everybody know about it with the. Winter coming, the snow, roads closed, um, that's the way we'll be like notifying. So if you're not signed up and you need help, let me know, um. When you talk with your neighbors, make sure they're signed up so they know what's going on, so everybody aware of. Any type of road conditions or any type of emergencies you need to get out. And then lastly, um, minute is trim uh, trim the trees. So you'll see them out and about, um, doing that and they will be using a special equipped helicopter. So, um, if you see. Little helicopter flying around will look weird. That's them trimming the trees. Um, that should be done beginning down in October, um. For anybody who has any concern, they can go to township and confirm if it's them or somebody else.
So, uh. Lisa, when they go. When they go to do that, let me know, let me know what the date is cuz uh I'll I'll probably try to take my kids out to see it. Uh, seeing a a helicopter trimming trees is probably gonna be pretty wild.
Yeah, uh, the letter would be said, said between now and October, but I can see if I can try to. Point that.
We sure. Fly all around and. Look for trees that need to be trimmed in that.
I've seen, I've seen some videos of helicopters trimming trees.
Yeah.
It's, it is pretty wild.
Now, we got a letter. I can show you the letter. It says that they're gonna be out about it.
Myself.
Yeah. But it just said between now and October. We didn't give any dates, but I could see that they're moving. So that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, uh, since we don't have a a full panel, we'll, including Colin. Go ahead, sorry, Jesse.
I forgot um to ask, ask about this. We also need to know when this joint mowing thing is going on. Um, Butch was supposed to be handling this joint mowing event with, what was it, normal store?
A topahawk in Topahawk.
I was gonna say, it's usually Tolpa Hocken that we mow with.
And I can't. I can't, I can't get a date out of book.
Well, so Jesse, I think we have a a number in the office for Butch Fike. Up in Topahawken, who's their roadmaster. Let's just call the other Butch.
Athlete on.
Okay, cuz I'll call him cuz if if he be, I might have to step in and help with that.
Sometime after Labor Day, so it should be done for August thirty-first. Or for the contract.
Well, we're, we're pretty much right on August thirty-first.
Yeah. And I think on the app, and things like, oh, that's what they call the, they do for Labor Day, something about.
Well, yeah, go, go, go right to the source. Call Butch Fike. He'll tell you, he'll give you a straight answer.
Thank you, Peter. Sorry about that. I forgot.
Oh, no, 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 uh, please, I'd much rather you ask. Um, okay, we're gonna skip the executive session cuz we don't have proper representation on that. Uh, so I'll, I'll close out saying, welcome to the team, Sol. We're glad to have you. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. The time is now nine oh six.
I'll second it.
Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And uh, stay safe.